Calling the meeting to order here at six thirty now, six thirty one P M. And I don't believe we have any public delegations because don't believe we have any members of the public. So sticking to the agenda, but giving providing some background. The first item on the agenda is to determine our twenty twenty one calendar. Now, when we last met and kind of through the process of making the update, we talked about our desire to keep the subcommittee together, even if the members change, to keep the subcommittee as a standing subcommittee coming out of the planning commission, who would meet regularly and provide regular updates so that we can try to facilitate some of the recommendations in the plan being executed and coming to fruition. So I I feel like this is kind of the meeting where we transfer from having written it and finished that up to how we're going to really communicate the recommendations in this plan to a broader audience and get some enthusiasm toward them and and do what we can at at the subcommittee level, knowing that many of the recommendations fall to other boards and commissions, but do what we can to kind of keep keep the ball rolling and you know, cause Gary to use the print plan as more than a expensive paperweight in his office. So that said, I wanted to just have a quick discussion about cadence of the meetings and kind of see where how you all feel. We did talk previously about, you know, this time being a planning subcommittee that perhaps this half hour slot prior to the planning commission monthly meetings might be a good time. Norm, I'm not sure how that works for you. But I was thinking perhaps we could meet six times a year, you know, every other month and just kind of come together briefly and update each other on what's going on in relation to the plan. Other thoughts or?
That makes sense. It won once every other month, I think.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I agree with that. The only thing that I'm wondering about is how much, I know there's a bit of legwork that that you've been doing and doing a good job at kind of setting up other meetings with other boards and commissions. I don't know that I'd be able to commit to doing that. So I mean, I'm willing to talk about like where everything is and try to help, you know, in in other ways. But as far as like doing the doing the meetings and setting up and coordinating, I don't know that I would be much help with that.
Okay, that's totally valid. And I think ideally we'll get a little bit more representation on this subcommittee too from the other boards and commissions. I'll update you later in the meeting, just kind of about the the groups that I visited in this last month and what some of the feedback was there. But I think too, it it's just, it will be helpful that we're all keeping it top of mind because in our lives as community members, things that touch the plan will certainly come up and will be better able to advocate if we stay familiar with the document. All right, so it seems like we're on the same page and we'll do every other month before planning. So our next meeting will be in July.
July at the Tap House.
Yes.
Sounds good.
So I'll I'll be sure to post a calendar with the clerk reflecting that change.
Great. And I will make sure that Jen, just for the benefit of everybody else, we have a couple of people from other boards and commissions that are interested in joining this subcommittee, someone from Waterferry Slime Shellfish Commission, potentially someone from Agribusiness. So and as we go out and are talking to more groups, I expect that we'll kind of have people either joining the subcommittee or popping in from time to time with applicable updates. Certainly, I would love for them to come visit us versus going to all the other. Okay. So the other thing is the matrix and that's kind of our hanging item from what we said we were going to do as far as completing the plan. It's been a bear, as you can imagine, and Gary's been taking that on pretty much independently. Gary, I did not get to open the attachment that we looked at last week.
Just update the committee. I've gotten through chapter, I think it's four. So we've got something like fourteen plus chapters. So just checking the boxes as we go. So I'm just working on that when I can. Hopefully, within the next month, we'll we'll get it completed.
Yeah, and in the interim, we are invited and I'm extending this invitation to all of you as well, please. We're will be an agenda item on the May nineteenth Board of Selectmen meeting. So what I would like to prepare before that, which I'm just going to copy paste out of the document, is just a list of the recommendations, no matrix, but just so that there is a kind of like an easy guide document to just go through the recommendations. You know.
Did I see that they canceled that meeting? Am I mistaken?
Did they?
The May nineteen?
I saw a cancellation.
We were on the agenda for May fifth, which they canceled.
Yeah.
But that would be cool.
I saw a cancellation. We'll have to check that and and find out, but I'm not sure.
All right. So we, if they cancel that one, we'll make sure we get on the next one because we haven't spoken with them since before the plan was adopted. I think the last time we probably were in front of them was their public hearing. And I did attend one of the meetings where they were inviting groups in to discuss the American Rescue Fund dollars and how that could potentially be spent. And while P O C D was not on the agenda, I did advocate in the public delegation for keeping the P O C D in mind when spending that money because a lot of it, you know, there's parameters and restrictions on how the money can be spent, but capital investments are certainly on the table as an available item, especially geared toward resilience and sustainability. And certainly, as with anything, there are a lot of good causes and things that need funding, especially now, but.
Well, the good thing about what we've done is we've we've kind of like outlined a lot of good ways that we think are important and and that, you know, money, if they have extra money, our plan is a good roadmap or a start of a roadmap anyway for some ideas.
I think so, and I would like that to be the thought at a lot of boards and commissions. So hopefully.
How can we, how can we kind of highlight a fact?
Well.
Other than what we've already done.
Yeah, so that's what I've been kind of doing is kind of treating this last month or so as like a roadshow of sorts, a book tour of the P O C D. And I've been to Parks and Rec, Historic Properties, Agribusiness, Waterferry Slime Shellfish Commission, and had a meeting with Joe Berga as well. But there's some big ones still hanging, obviously Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance I would like to meet with. I would like to make sure that we get on a zoning agenda coming up, Norm. But what I've been trying to do is kind of reiterate a lot of the things that we communicated early on about how we got so so much public feedback at the beginning of this process, walk them through the whole process of inviting everybody to come to those stakeholder meetings, having the public forum, having the survey, you know, all of the opportunities where we allowed public feedback so that, you know, we could be very confident in, you know, the recommendations that we were including, being reflective of of what the town wanted. And so I've been kind of going through the whole, you know, Reader's Digest version of the process with them and then diving into the recommendations that probably most apply to their boards and commissions and really just asking them to become familiar with their chapters and keep them in mind as their future planning, offer us as a resource and ask that they kind of spread the word in their own networks beyond the boards and commissions like. And you know, we had a lot of examples and we talked about this when we were writing the plan too. And I think Norm and Gary are probably more familiar with this than any of us. Often, when we get a lot of feedback from community members, it's about some, it's it's too late, right? An application comes in that meets the regulations and then we learn that the community doesn't like the regulations. So it doesn't want the regulations to apply in this case. Well, this document is full of all kinds of recommendations on changing regulations. So my pitch has kind of been in, we need to be proactive or it doesn't happen, you know. So I've been met with some good enthusiasm and I'm hoping that it translates. I asked the boards and commissions to take a look at what might make sense as like low hanging fruit to accomplish, to kind of get some momentum going. And that's something that I want to talk about with this group too in terms of what we might want to bring up at the Board of Selectmen meeting. If there are a couple of things that we might want to just float as ideas that would give us, you know, a little bit of credibility right here at the at the start as far as our ability to implement.
We had, we had a bunch of things about the arts and how to use the arts and, you know, if we tied, like, there were some ideas about doing street art on the street to show where the walking and bike lanes were and and like some signage. Maybe, I don't know, I don't know what the requirements are for that fund, for the funding that we're supposed to get, but maybe we can, you know, highlight the fact that we've proposed some of these beautification and art things that would serve more than one purpose and safety and beautification kind of thing. Maybe try to. So there's one.
That's a good one because at that meeting that I went to, Nyanic Main Street was one of the presenters and one of the, and they were kind of making their pitch for money too. And they were pitching for public art installations. And I agree with you, the ones that are about like safety or like trash disposal or all the other things are multi-purposed.
What is the criteria for the receipt of that, of those funds?
So it can't be something that adds to the municipal budget moving forward. So can't be like hiring another, what?
Does it have to be economic development related?
It, there's a preference, but it also can be infrastructure or community aid. So food pantries, mental health programs, economic development initiatives, infrastructure, and it can't be, it can't, we can't use the money to spend it on something that we were already planning to spend it on. So we can't take the money and just say, great, no tax increase this year. And we can't spend it on something that would incur additional costs beyond the investment. So like we could have a temporary, you know, additional social worker at, you know, Easton Public Schools, but it would be a contract three year position or whatever. I'm just making up a timeline that would have to end.
So it has to be a defined purpose and amount that will fulfill that purpose.
Yep.
Okay, and you have two years to use the money, I think, right?
Yeah, some of the infrastructure you have a little longer as long as you start earlier. I just got an email about that today. And we cannot use it to pay down debt either.
Or reduce taxes.
Wondering about the infrastructure part. I wonder about the sidewalks, which I don't know if we've, I don't know if that would fall into one of those things that we were planning on doing anyway, but it doesn't seem like, well, I don't know what the status is, I guess, so I shouldn't, I shouldn't speculate. But I haven't seen new sidewalks going in anywhere. Maybe I'm just not in the right part of town to see it, but some of those spots that we highlighted for, you know, walking areas, like the one sixty one corridor, which is a state road. So I don't know if that complicates things or not.
Getting that other study done on it right now too, right?
I I would just add to my best of my knowledge, there's been no new sidewalk in the last five years, not longer. That said, we have our plan, which has a transportation section that highlights the need for sidewalks in these locations. And I think sidewalks would qualify. So, you know, they're they're also equitable. So I think that's a definitely a good one to go after. I think that would be low hanging fruit.
And that's one they're talking about already. They did bring that up a few times, different board members.
You know, there's that and there's possibly some sewer extension work that could be done if the town was so inclined to pursue that. I I don't, I haven't really heard any talk from Brad. I could follow up with him and see where water sewer is at with with that. But those types of projects I think would qualify. I don't know if that's helpful, Kirk, but I think we could certainly recommend to the board that, you know, they've already been discussing it. I don't know if there's someone we can reach out to regarding those funds and.
So Will, I asked about that. They're having these meetings and we don't get the money until, I think, June. So they're not going to decide for a while that, so us being at the May meeting is kind of our opportunity to make these pitches.
The corridor study, I just got word today from Kate Retan of the Council of Governments. She indicated that D O T has finally assigned a project number to it and the start date would be October one of this year. So it's, there's finally some movement going forward. It's taken a while, but both there's two projects in the works out of the cog and the others, the other projects in New London. So they'll be running simultaneously.
A lot of, a lot of this of our plan was rooted by a lot of townspeople requesting slower, slowing down growth, preserving land and so forth. I'm just wondering whether we could support some project that the land trust might be eyeing and just verbally supporting that. I I have to assume that the land trust has come before the the Board of Selectmen requesting something for a specific project. Be nice if we could support that if it did happen.
That's a really good idea. And just kind of a a going on record about it when those projects arise.
It should be mentioned, yeah, because it was a strong part of our land use section.
I totally agree.
Somebody keeping track of all these good ideas?
Yep. One that I wanted to float and I think this would be a Board of Selectment ordinance, but it would definitely be have to be enforced by a number of different offices. I wanted to see if that recommendation on covering trash cans and dumpsters was something that we could implement kind of in our first year here. That's a sticker for me. Just watching seals pull stuff out of the beach garbage cans and drop it everywhere and watch people, you know, reside their houses and pieces of siding go flying in the wind. But that might be so running it by all of you.
Oh, I I agree. I think it's a great idea. My my only thought, and this is just me being like ignorant to how it really works, but how would you start? How would you, how would you go about enacting an ordinance like that? What what's the process or who would who would initiate that?
I'm not sure. That's another reason that I wanted to bring it here.
So the ordinances have to be obviously kind of come out of the Board of Selectmen and they'll go to referendum. So what you're probably going to draft, we'd have to draft up language for them to consider, get in front of them on an agenda and have them consider it, discuss it. And if they're on board, they'll go ahead and pursue a referendum and whether or not to pass it.
Well, I think, I think if we have a bunch of recommendations that would fit a regulation, I mean, you know, most of the work is done it on our end, we would just have to formalize it into whatever language it would have to be in for them to to consider it.
It, I mean, it could be just something that's like tacked on to the the existing blight ordinance, could be its own separate ordinance. It kind of falls under the blight thing, but it is, you know, it's more of an, you know, active construction type thing. So maybe it's, you know, I mean, would it be more appropriate as as a zoning rag? I mean, that's going to be hard for a zoning officer to chase every, you know, trash can. That's not reasonable, I don't think, but at least as an ordinance ordinance on a big project, we might have some teeth if it was part of the blight. You know.
About building, building permits, somehow tack it to a voting permit.
Or the building, yeah, give the authority to the building official to enforce that. And so you got to keep a clean sight type of a thing. But we can certainly look around at other municipalities to see if they have any ordinances like that. I think Michelle pointed to Massachusetts as having, being proactive on this. So we can kind of get some of that language from them and kind of see what's out there and maybe you know, we we could talk offline between now and the nineteenth and that, you know, and maybe glean from the Board of Selectmen on the nineteenth that that's something that they would consider.
Yeah, and I think this one might be, I think we have some that might be like a, in our first six months, we can do this, right? That I think this one might be, you know, in our first year or two, but I, but I think it will be important to kind of identify these you know, earlier, even if not quick, things we can do.
I would say quickly because if if they're meeting in this month and what you said, you said they're applying for money next month or?
Well, yes, so the COVID money, that's a fast actor. And so for that, I think that we just highlight some of the things in the plan that are less regulation but are more, you know, spend this money. So I'm kind of talking about two different things. Well, for the nineteenth, you know, here's some ways to spend the COVID money that ties into what you've already been talking about or just, you know, here are some ways to spend the COVID money. But like a garbage can ordinance, you know, might take us several months to like.
In the matrix, if you look, you you'll see there's there's short term, midterm, long term. So that would kind of highlight how you would go about implementing a recommendation. The only thing I I would want to do again is just tie everything back to sustainable C T. We did get our bronze award and we're, I believe, the Natural Resource Commission is is working towards silver. That said, Penny Heller, I think is a little tired. She did a lot of work on the first go around, so I think she's looking for some help. And she's found some volunteers or other like minded organizations. There's a new woman, Marjorie Mikoff, who started Polinator Pathways LLC. It's a nonprofit. What's interesting about them is she's a nonprofit, whereas it run privately. Whereas most municipalities have adopted this and started their own nonprofit and it's run by the municipality. But that said, she's willing to kind of help out and volunteer and push some of these items and and as they relate to the sustainable C T stuff. I mean, I know that's more, you know, political and, you know, kudos to the towns and whatnot, but I think it does speak to the effort that we're putting forward and and the benefits, the benefits of doing this, you know, it's not for not. It's to not only save money but to improve the environment. So I think that's important and I think that gets lost. I think these environmental improvements or these things are viewed as it's an additional cost to be at the town or or the developer. When you actually look at it, it's a bit of a wash. And then long term is when you're going to see your return on the investment. So I think it's just important to highlight those benefits of some of the projects. I can go through the recommendations some more and see what other low hanging fruit might be available. If any ideas come to mind, there's been a lot of talk about desegregate Connecticut. You know, this is the idea that let's just take any single family residential neighborhood in town and turn it into, you know, why can't that single phone, single family home house multiple families? That's really what that organ, that effort is pushing. Well, in some communities that may be appropriate, you know, that's, I guess we haven't tackled it yet here. So I think that might be something that that's going to kind of fall into our wheelhouse as far as how do we want to plan for this? This equity, right? This is really what desegregate Connecticut is all about. You know, I go back to, well, we have zoning and zoning dictates, you know, what you're going to do in this zone or that zone. We have zones for single family dwellings. If that was your American dream, you have the opportunity for it. Your American dream was to live in a multifamily development, we have that here too. I think the bigger issue is really the affordability of all this housing and how that gets played out. If you don't know, as of April one, I was, I'm trying to nail this down, but I was informed that the median income for Nyanic had gone down to seventy nine thousand. We had a woman in thirty eight Hope Street trying to sell her affordable unit. She bought it last year at one eighty two, but the drop in the median income, her buyer no longer qualified because he made eighty thousand dollars a year and she could no longer sell the unit at a hundred and eighty two thousand, but instead a hundred and eighty. So she has to take a two thousand dollar loss when her offer was one eighty five. So it's really unfortunate, but that's the issue with affordable housing. It does not increase and and, you know, you don't build equity in it fast, so.
Well, I'm glad you're bringing this up because it reminded me of something that actually we do need to kind of get started on now. One of the recommendations, which is to form an affordable housing committee.
Well, we're going to have to regardless because we have to update the Affordable Housing Plan every two years and I I'll go back and and verify the dates for the commission. But I think we're, I think we have a three year window to get that done. But from there on out, it'll be every two years we update this plan. That's going to be an undertaking, but.
Yeah. And previously that fell into the P O C D.
Yeah, so.
Like that chapter is our plan, but we talked about having a separate plan.
We we have a separate plan. We had the the Council of Governments had the Southeastern Connecticut Housing Authority. They were working out of there back in, say, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, when we updated that P O C D. They went ahead and didn't affordable housing plan at that time. You know, since out of date. So it's at least ten years old.
Can I, can I jump in here for a second? It's seven o'clock.
Yep, okay.
Do, do we want to try to wrap it up in a minute or?
Yeah, so I think the takeaway items, we wrote down some things for the May nineteenth meeting as far as COVID money spend recommendations. We are going to take a look at some of the policy changes that might be good, short term goals. And one of those will be, we do have to set up an affordable housing committee, I think, sooner than later. And our next meeting will be in July, but certainly we can chat before then. And I'm going to keep kind of doing work to get on other agendas. So I'll keep the whole group posted on on those opportunities.
We can, we can talk about some of this stuff too at our planning meeting because there is a spot on the agenda. So if you want to.
Okay.
We can make a motion to move the, move this discussion to the beginning of that meeting if Norm wants to stick around and join the other one. We can make a motion to move the, move this discussion to the beginning of that meeting if Norm wants to stick around and join the other one.
I think I have to stop this one.
Yep.
Start the next one.
Is he still?
It's the next meeting?
It's the planning meeting. We'll, we'll make a motion to.
Starts at seven.
It's at seven, which we're late, but we can make a motion to do this first after we. Get the preliminaries out of the way.
Okay.
Alright, I'm gonna.
Adjourn this meeting.
I will move to adjourn the meeting.
A second.
Okay, all in favor? Probably could do a, I, yep, three eyes. Norm, you in favor of adjourning?
Yes, is there, is there a separate?